To the Monday, March tenth, two thousand and fourteen, Milford Board of Selectmen meeting. First item on the agenda is the signing of the warrant.
Motion, Bill.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Next is the approval of the February twenty-fourth meeting minutes.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
That's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is citizen participation. Is there anybody here who would like to address the board who's not scheduled as part of one of the agenda items? Not hearing anybody. We'll move on to the public hearings and scheduled appointments. The first item on the agenda is Police Chief Thomas Alafman with the introduction of new officer.
I think, Mr. Chairman, he's out in the hallway, but here he comes.
Chief, do you need a minute? Because we can jump. Okay. Welcome, Chief. How are you this evening?
Good.
Great.
Hello, Tom.
I'm waiting for John.
Okay, well, that's the boss.
Why is it across the air?
All right. So we have a new officer you'd like to introduce?
I'm waiting for him to come.
All right.
Oh, here he is, right here.
You're tied up. Yeah, Scotty.
You've now been deputized.
There you go.
Police Officer Scott.
Why don't we jump to the second item on the agenda where Police Chief, you're also involved, and that's the traffic conditions on East Main Street and recommendations from Police Chief, Town Engineer, and Highway Survey. Hi, Bonnie. Hi, Scott.
Hello.
Evening. Yeah, the last time we had talked about some traffic improvements, there was still a question of what was left on East Main Street, so I'll introduce it that way and let you begin.
Well, the recommendation that we made is if there is still a sentiment that we should do something on East Main Street about either the speed or the timing of how long it takes people to get out of their streets, then we, the three of us, would be happy to make a recommendation to Mass Highway to take a look at the speed on that road and let Mass Highway determine whether or not it is posted correctly for the use of the road. It is a state road, so we can't make that decision independently. We need to go through Mass Highway for that to happen.
Okay, I'll let the board members weigh in. They participated in the neighborhood meetings that we had up there, and I want to make sure that, you know, if we give you the right type of signals and indications from a board perspective, whether we think that's simply a belief by the neighbors or there's additional data that's required. We know one of the things that we've talked about previously is the inability of people to pull out of their driveways or to egress out of the neighborhoods and some of the streets up there, but I'll let the board members weigh in on their thoughts and the direction.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, when I read the memo, I think it's important that we continue to do whatever we can. I mean, the neighbors in that area felt that the speed limit was a lot higher. The chief, you did the analysis, the study, eighty-five percentile, I believe it was forty-two miles an hour, but still, I think it doesn't cost anything to try. So I think if we can ask the appropriate agency, take a look at it, they may come back and say, fine, you can do it, because we know it's not our road, and they may also, at times, maybe come back with maybe another recommendation or something that else can be done. So I think that, like I said, you know, our job is to try things out. If we can do something and the results come back, then, fine. If we can't, at least we can, you know, look people in the face and say, hey, we tried, we couldn't do anything. But let's see what happens, and then we'll go from there. So I was very pleased with that recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Brian?
Thank you. Let me ask you this. Is there any cost associated with this request?
No. Basically, what I'll do is I'll use the speed study that we had already done.
Okay.
Required to do that. I have to pull up all the crash reports for that stretch roadway, so from the Holliston line back to Fortune Boulevard. And then there's a requirement that we actually go out there with a radar gun and catch the speed of a number, a set number of vehicles. They have it laid out in their requirements. And then, lastly, just driving the road in a police vehicle to see a sense of what it will handle. You fill out those reports, send them over to the state. As you know, I'm working on the speed limits. Myself and Bonnie went out and we looked at all the speed signs, and they're difficult to get, get speed signs. To give you an idea, I've processed now nine of them, and they came back with eight and only one that they're willing to look at. The rest, they said, no, remove those.
That was my other question. So this, so you could assemble that information, and then it's still discretionary with the state as to whether or not they want to evaluate it?
Right. As, well, they'll evaluate the information that I send to them.
Yeah.
And if need be, they'll send out one of the district engineers to actually take a look at the roadway itself. But at the end of the day, it is, even on a town road, it is the state's decision whether or not you can put a speed sign and then, if you can, what the speed will be.
Okay, all right. So, well, let me, all right, I'm a little unclear. So do you think, Tom, that they will effectively look at the information that we provide and then make a decision as to whether or not it ought to change? Or is it possible that they either A, may not even look at the information, or if they do, just think that the existing speed is satisfactory?
My experience is they absolutely look at all of the information.
Okay.
Because some of what they come back in the letters where they either say, we're willing to take a look. For instance, Mac Drive, Claudette, they told me, okay, get us the additional forms.
Okay.
The others, you know, they come back and they tell you, no, the eighty-fifth percentile is this. That roadway, you know, is such and such a grade roadway, and, you know, that's what's appropriate. So to put it together, it's between Russ Passant and some of the other officers, you know, I can pull off those. I already have the speed data, and then, lastly, I pulled into the crash reports. That's, it's an hour's time. But no, there's no fees or anything of that nature, and they always come back with a response to you of what their decision is.
And what's usually their timeframe?
I, they turned around eight of them in about thirty days.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I mean, it sounds as though there's really nothing to lose on our behalf to do that. So, I mean, you've accumulated some good information right now. I mean, I think it's the only other step in the process that's available to us, correct?
Right, because we're looking at speed, and under the general laws, any speed limits have to be approved by Mass DOT and the Registry of Motor Vehicles before you can, and they issue what they call a warrant, you know, so allow you to put up those speed signs. So, as I said, even on town roadways, we have to, in this case, it's actually their roadway. The state owns that roadway, so we're merely making a recommendation to them that they take a look at their own regulations, because it is posted now, as I indicated when we last met.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Chief, I just missed something. When Brian asked you, how long does it take to get something back? What did you say?
My experience of turnaround time, even as recent as this past month, is about thirty to forty-five days.
Oh, okay.
And they'll respond back to you. If they need more information, they'll tell you exactly what they're looking for, and then they make a decision. On a number of those, you know, I gave them the first, the two pieces, and they made a decision just based on that. They didn't want to see the other, so, you know, so you don't invest a lot of time.
And this is, I'm sorry, Brian, are you?
Yeah, I'm all set, thanks.
This is something that the town can't do unilaterally. It requires the state. It's a state road, and it would preclude us from making those changes?
Well, we can't do anything on that road, because they own the roadway. So we couldn't put up a slow children's sign, because it is a state roadway. We could ask them to do it. But as I indicated, even on town-owned roadways, the law requires that Mass DOT and the Registry of Motor Vehicles approve any speed signs.
Okay. Yeah, I would say, I would agree with my colleagues in saying, yeah, let's go forward and see what we can do. You know, obviously, the ultimate goal is to make that safer, and if folks can't pull in and out of their driveways or their roadways, then it's worth checking on.
Motion, Bill?
Over the winter, we have had some complaints about snow piles on the corner of side streets and stuff like that.
Sure.
We've gone there and done some light snow removal.
Okay.
If we needed to.
Just to give them line of sight?
Right.
Okay.
Motion.
I don't think there's a vote required, but do you see any? Okay, well, let's make a motion just to make.
Motion.
Okay, there's been a motion made.
Motion to proceed in accordance with the memo?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, I'm in favor as well. That's unanimous.
Great.
Great.
While we're, the traffic issues, when we last discussed the three spaces on Main Street, right there at the seven-eleven, Selectman Murray had asked that we go out and survey the businesses in the area to see what their sentiment was. We did that, and I provided that information. Officer Joe Franciscone, he went door-to-door and gathered information and...
It's item E two. Okay.
So it's, and you'll see, it's mixed. I mean, there are some that would like the spaces to remain. Some of the business people, others would like them to remain, but they see the traffic benefits. And then there are those that say, no, take them out. It'll help traffic.
Based on the survey, do you still maintain the same recommendation to remove them, or...
I think that it opens the intersection, you know, those three spaces. They were, they were not there previous to this effort to rebuild Main Street and put in all the new signals. I do think that it'll allow cars that are going to go left onto Jefferson to queue over to the left and then have the through traffic. So...
How about you, Bonnie?
That's my observation.
All right.
Yeah, I think it'll open up that area and keep the traffic that wants to turn right flowing better. So I think it's a good recommendation.
Okay. All right. Is there a recommendation by the board?
Mr. Chairman, I, uh...
Motion?
I had, before this even came up, I had talked to Bonnie about that and also a former engineer, Mike Santora. I've seen, myself, I've almost been hit twice by people parking there, and all of a sudden they jet out or they open their doors. And I've also had people call me on the phone to say, it's people parking there. You really can't tell until the last minute. So I, you know, when Brian asked that we do the survey, you know, fine, I think it came back. I think there are more, it doesn't matter than it would matter. And I think, you know, for public safety, I think it's best if those two spots were removed. So that's my feeling.
I was just trying to, I was just looking at these businesses. It's almost a tie, you know, about three or four, you know, in favor of removing them, three or four against, and I guess one fellow that feels strongly both ways.
Yeah, it goes either way, right?
You know, I mean, you know, I don't know that, you know, traffic flow is as big a problem as, you know, we may have thought at that particular spot, at that intersection heading west. You know, just knowing the scarcity of parking that we have on Main Street, and we have at least three businesses here that feel very strongly that's going to negatively impact their business, you know, I can't, I can't approve doing it. The state laid it out, you know, this is all part of the whole state's plan, between the intersections, the lights. It is what it is. I understand the argument that, you know, traffic can, you know, turn right or go forward, but I think if you talk to the business people on Main Street, they're going to tell you that parking is the number-one problem. So I can't, you know, support eliminating even two, what is it, two or three parking spaces? Not when I've got three businesses coming up very strongly against us.
Okay. Yeah, my general thinking is I was concerned about those businesses as well. At the same time, I'm struggling with not supporting what the police chief and town engineer have recommended. So, you know, I guess at this point, I'd be willing to entertain a motion, see where that goes.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, like I said, I've experienced it personally. I've had other people call me up, and I just think that, hey, we're all concerned about the businesses. And, fine, we have two spots. I think public safety trumps anything, so that I would, you know, I would be in favor of having those two spots removed, so that the line of sight, the flow is consistent, that people can move along appropriately, and I think it's just going to prevent an accident in the future. So that would be my motion, that we remove the two spots.
Okay.
Adjacent to the, what's next door?
Seven-eleven.
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 Okay. Is there a second?
No second, but let's be clear. We're talking about three parking spaces, not two.
Okay.
There are three parking spaces here.
Are there three or two, Vaughn?
This memo all talks about three parking spaces directly in front of seven-eleven.
I thought there's two.
I thought it was two.
Yeah. Now, those two, two as well.
I'm just reading the memo that were presented, so...
You know, so...
Says three parking spaces, but it's two or three.
I believe it's two.
I took the memo at face value. The three, I remember two.
I thought it was three.
So I'll...
Chief, you complain the new officer?
Assume it's, assume it's three.
I'm voting on something that we're not real sure we're voting on.
There's not much space there.
Yeah.
I think there are two spaces. I think they're pretty sure there are. So I would make a motion that we remove the two spots at that location.
Okay. You know, for me, I guess ultimately, it comes down to public safety. And if we were to have one incident where somebody were injured, I'm also sensitive to the businesses and sensitive to their parking needs. I'm not sure that the spaces that we're talking about are going to make a radical difference. I think there's a lot more that we can do with respect to parking on Main Street, but safety is the number-one issue. If somebody were to be hurt there, one of our residents were hurt, or God forbid, somebody crossing the street there and were blocked by those parking spaces, I think I'd be remiss if not supporting the police chief and town engineer's recommendation. So I'd be willing to second that motion, and it looks like it's two in favor and one opposed. Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is, Bonnie, I guess you can step back. The chief's staying put, because he still has more things on the agenda. I wanted to let Scott go, and then we're going to come back to you.
Sure, all right.
With holiday decorations. Let me, let me just say this, before you get started. It's probably one of the items that I received more calls on this holiday, and it was specifically that Milford has done such a tremendous job over the years decorating Main Street, making it a place that's welcoming during the holidays, and really making it a showplace. And I think it's declined over the last few years. And so I appreciate, Scott, you bringing this forward and talking about it. Why don't you, I'll introduce it with that and just say there was a lot of calls this holiday season and...
Yeah. Well, since I've worked at the highway department almost twenty years, we've been dealing with the wreaths. I've always helped Sue Clark over the years, try to get them up, try to get them down. It's always a nighttime activity. The wreaths were bought in nineteen ninety-seven. There, forty of them were bought. We managed to get twenty of them working this year, and we put them back. There's probably seventeen working now. So they pretty much live their life. They're over. The lights don't work, the bows are covered with mold and faded. So I don't, you know, I don't think it's right to be putting those back up, and so we have nothing at this point. So because I've dealt with it with Sue over the years, I want to stay involved in it, and I'd like to, you know, start a committee, a downtown decoration committee, that can keep up with this and, you know, raise money where necessary to buy new decorations. I know, over the years, between Mass Electric at the time, with Joe Acuti and Chris Alves, they came out at night, put them up, used Mass Electric trucks or National Goods trucks, and took them down at the end of the year. They couldn't do it anymore, union issues, whatever it was. O'Donnell Electric took over for years. They did it. And it's begging and borrowing. They're not getting paid to do it, and, you know, they're helping us out. But it comes a time when, you know, you can't do it anymore, you know, for everybody. Babe Minini for years helped us out. He did it. Tommy Parenti's always been there. So anyways, we'd like to change that. We'd like to actually have some kind of committee that can control and get it done and not rely on one person to try to do it, whoever we can get to do it. So at this point, we have nothing. So something's going to have to be done, obviously, before the holidays. And I guess the goal goes not just, you know, you know, the winter holidays, you know, summer holidays, Fourth of July, and maybe seasonal kind of decorations. You see it in a lot of towns. You'll see flags, banners, flyers, all kinds of stuff on poles. It looks very nice. You know, as a kid, I remember going through the main street at Christmas time. It was unbelievable, lights everywhere, and it's just been diminished down to almost nothing. So I'm asking for people that want to get on the committee. Anybody who wants to get involved? I mean, the more the merrier right now, just so we can get this started. I know Peter Scandoni, he's offered to get involved, and I think your wife also.
Yes, yeah, my wife Claudia.
Yeah. So basically, that's it. I mean, our goal is to have year-round decoration.
Yeah, folks that called me had volunteered as well, and so I had talked to Rick about this previously. But, you know, I think part of it is, I think, you know, we should, we should, as a board, sanction some type of committee that goes forward. I'm comfortable with you chairing that activity. I know that you've talked to me about the resources, and you think you can, you can do it. I also think, before you go out to merchants or anywhere else, I think, you know, I talked to Rick about available funds. Rick, did you come up with a recommendation that you...
There'd be a couple of areas. We looked at some gift fund accounts that we may be able to tap. One is Town Hall rededication Y-2K fund.
Okay.
About fifty-eight hundred in that. Obviously, the, we've talked about it before, the Bio-Measure TIF.
Right.
Fund has approximately sixty thousand, six hundred.
Okay.
I haven't looked at some of the other gift funds, but I just want to make sure that it is proper to tap the other gift funds.
Still, you haven't talked to Jerry yet, but...
Not to Jerry about this, no, I have not.
But so far, you're...
Those are the two that I think we could tap.
I think you're right.
In talking to Zach about the Y-2K one. Also, it does talk about, you know, decoration-type activities.
So we have some funds specifically based in part by tax, the last of the TIF agreement dollars, and I think it's appropriate that we get something like this started and kicked off with some seed money. So, you know, I'd like to see if there's an opportunity to, if the board is so inclined, to start this effort off with fifteen thousand dollars and see where we go from there. Because, as you said, the state of the decorations that we've got are past their useful life. And the second piece of it is, I think there's, as you said, more opportunity for different holidays to celebrate. So I'll check and see, let's check and see where the board members are and see if they're so inclined to be supportive of that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think, can I use Scott and Peter coming forward?
Thank you.
I have a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
I'm the...
Hold on just a second. Let me, let me go to the board members and...
I'll, you...
All right, all right, go ahead, Peter.
All right, okay.
It is all the same, all year to.
Go ahead, Peter.
I'm the liaison for Citizens for Milford. I just want to point out, we're strongly behind this, and we've got a lot of people that'll donate their time and whatever's needed. And if the need does become necessary, I noticed yesterday going through Rhode Island that there were islands adopted by businesses and industries, that it was their responsibility to take care of them. So I wouldn't have any trouble approaching anybody if that comes up. Also, we were talking about a tree lighting ceremony, perhaps in Draper Park, following the parade with a twenty-foot tree lighting. See if we can recruit a chorus, whether it's the Claflin Hill or something from the high school. That'd be something very festive. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, very good. And hopefully, as you said, we're not just talking about the Hanukkah and Christmas season, holidays, the end of the year, but also other holidays.
Right. Yeah, the other big issue we always had was getting the wreaths put up and get them taken down.
Right.
I mean, sometimes they wouldn't come down for three, four months after Christmas.
Yeah.
And you can't have that. That destroys the wreaths.
Yeah, they stay up too long.
The reason they're in the condition they're in. So, you know, if it comes down, if we can afford to, actually have to hire someone to put them up and take them down, because unfortunately, it's a nighttime operation. With using a bucket truck, you can't do it in traffic.
Okay.
You swing out, and it's very dangerous. So that's, that's the issue we've always had. And this year, we managed to, we've already lifted from Raza Electric, and we had a highway guy, a pox guy, and Carlos from Town Hall went up, went up Main Street with the lift and put all the wreaths up. It took two days. So it wasn't as easy as doing it like it would be with a bucket truck. So...
Is there a bucket truck available to the town?
The only bucket truck we have is the fire department, and I don't know how available that is.
All right, we can talk to them. Hold on just a second. Let me get to Brian. Brian isn't out. Tune your way in.
I think Dean.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dean really...
Yeah, you're right. The floor.
No, I think it's commendable that both of you want to come along. We bought those lights about twenty years ago, whenever it was. I think it costs around ten thousand. So I think fifteen thousand is a good start. I know this year, when I always go to the parade, and I called the administrator the next day and said, where are the, where are the Christmas decorations? And it took a little while. We've always depended upon the same people all the time. So I think it's good that we come up with some, you know, new guidelines, get more people involved.
Something that we know is going to happen every year.
Right. And that's the biggest thing. And then I think we stored them at Stout Main Street Station for a long time. And then I think, Scotty, they came to the, they restored at the Highway Barn, right?
Yeah, they're at the youth center now.
Yeah. Oh, the youth center, okay. So we've tried to raise money in the past. I think a lot of cases, the same people came forward, but I think this, you know, the lights are too old, so it'd be nice to do, as you say, and hopefully, anybody that we receive as volunteers, we can send them right to you, Scott, so we don't waste any time.
And I think most of the costs will be at the startup, because once we have what we need, it's a matter of getting them up and down, that's all.
Sure.
So, like to get to that point.
Before Mr. O'Donnell, Billy, you know, loved to do that.
Yes.
But he's not here anymore.
Right, but, you know, to expect everybody to do it on their own time, all the time, I understand that.
And the firefighters did a great job for a long time. You had the department, so I think this, this way to approach this is probably the best way to go. Okay, Brian, that'll be you. Go ahead.
All righty. Thank you. Yeah, thanks for coming forward to doing this. You know, it's a nice thing every season to see. But I'd like to try to approach it a little differently. Instead of putting a lump of money, a lump of money out there on the table, what do you think a budget would be? I mean, what would these things cost? I mean, I don't know.
Depending on how extravagant you want to get. I mean, just to replace Christmas wreaths, you can do that for that, that amount of money. We've talked about flags. We've talked about a lot of things we've looked at, and it can get very expensive. So I think it's going to have to be done in steps. You know, I don't, maybe a little this year, a little next year, and so on.
And what would you envision an annual cost to, just stay with the wreaths, I guess, because that's the major focus, and it sounds like you're going to build off of that and try to do things other holidays. And then you've got to be prepared for other groups to come to you beyond, you know, Christmas and...
Of course.
That's a whole other issue, so...
Right, we don't want to make all of them Christmas.
Before we even get started, I'd tell you, I'd have a conversation with Jerry Moody, you know, as to, you know, the proper way to go forward on this. But what do you estimate the cost to be for installation and a takedown, just on the wreaths?
I would, I would hope it could be done for, wild guess, thousand dollars, up and down.
Two thousand, a thousand for both?
Thousand, thousand for both, up and down. But when you're talking, you know, seasonal changes, you may be doing that a couple of times a year.
Yeah.
You know, we'd all have to, we'd have to figure that out, as far as when to change, what to change into, whether you go spring, summer, or, you know, spring and then maybe Fourth of July, or, you know.
All right. Well, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to see is the committee come back with a written proposal as to what they're actually looking to do, and the requests for funds that they think they need. You think it's fifteen thousand, whatever it is, but I'd like to see something back in writing as to what you're proposing to do. And I understand, you know, it's an incremental type thing, so, you know, I take it you're focusing first on the Christmas holidays? Or you're going to try to focus on the July Fourth? I don't know what the plan is.
No, I think we'd probably focus on the winter holidays, Christmas, upon a current.
All right. All right. So I'd like to see something back from the committee in writing in terms of what they're proposing to do and what they're looking for for a budget.
Just one more thought. I think we had the Chamber of Commerce lady and executive director a couple of months ago, and she's very professional, done a lot of things, wants to work with the small business, large business, so maybe she might be a lady to speak to at some point, to try to solicit funds from the corporations.
Okay. Yeah, I'm okay waiting for a proposal and a plan. I'm fine with that. I was okay seating it up front, but I can look at a plan and do that when you're ready. I think we're starting at the appropriate time, frankly, because if we waited until October, it would just not happen.
No, no, no.
It would be another year lost. So, starting now and getting it, just make sure you communicate back to the board what your needs are.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Appreciate you stepping forward, uh, taking ownership and offering to chair this committee. Uh, all of that's a great thing, and I appreciate it, Scott.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to come back to the police chief now.
All right.
And the introduction of new police officer.
When we appoint new police officers after they finish the academy, or if they come as a lateral transfer, you know, it's always a good thing to come here to the board to introduce them, so you put a face to a name. And, uh, tonight I have with me Jonathan Levine. Uh, Jonathan was raised in the town of Hope Dale. He graduated from Hope Dale High School in two thousand and three. He attended Ashford University, he has completed three semesters. He's bilingual, he speaks, uh, English and Portuguese. Uh, in February of two thousand nine, he entered the U.S. Air Force as a military police officer, and he served in the armed services until May of two thousand twelve. He was deployed overseas, uh, and, uh, was assigned to an airbase, uh, in, in support of the Iraqi war. Um, he served as a Milford Police Dispatcher, two thousand and twelve to two thousand thirteen. Uh, he was appointed as a student officer on July twenty-second, two thousand thirteen. He attended the MBTA Police Academy full-time for six months, graduating on my birthday, January thirty-first, twenty fourteen.
He's looking for more cards this year. That's all right.[699.82][699.82](laugh) It works for me.
He's presently assigned to the four-to-twelve shift with Officer Robbie Tosino, so field training, uh, and he's been riding with Robbie, uh, since the first week of February, and he's pretty close to wrapping that up. Uh, he, he knows his way around the community, so as far as learning streets, uh, that was easy for him. He understands how we operate internally, because he served as a dispatcher, so he understands that facet of it. And it was just a matter of him actually going with an experienced officer into different situations, so we could measure, you know, his skills and abilities, that which he was taught, against the circumstances that confront him, and he's done a, a fine job. So, uh, he'll be spending some time with Robbie, probably a couple more weeks, and, uh, then he'll be on his own, uh, working on the four-to-twelve shift.
Well, welcome, Officer Levine. The board's happy to welcome you. Uh, you come with the right background, and this, this is exactly from my perspective, uh, what the Milford Police Department, uh, needs and should be doing. When we get the opportunity to, uh, have a, a young man who's local, served his country in the military, and also worked as a dispatcher, uh, I can think of no better, uh, training process for you, and, uh, I commend the chief for keeping you through that process and, uh, bringing you here, and I'll, I'll go to the other board members.
No, Officer Levine, nice having you before us. The chief spoke very eloquently of you. It's a, uh, we have one of the best in the state. We have a very good department, learn, take tests, go to school. Maybe someday you'll, uh, become Police Chief in Milford, so, uh, you're starting off in the right place, and, you know, thank you for your service, uh, as a soldier.
Thank you, sir.
That's most important. And, uh, uh, look forward to have, to seeing you on, around, and, uh, and good luck and best of luck, okay?
Thank you very much, sir.
Rising up in the ranks pretty fast, that first night.
I'll see.[825.12][825.12](laugh)
Congratulations, welcome to Milford. You've got a great background, and, uh, we're very lucky to have you here to serve the town.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good luck and be careful.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, be safe.
That's right, be careful.
Thank you.
Great to meet you.
Thank you.
(inaudible).
Okay, chief, um, next item we want, why don't we go ahead and go to the correspondence that you provided, uh, regarding the deployment of Narcan?
Sure.
Next.
I, I wanted to inform the board, uh, Narcan is a drug that is available through prescription, uh, and it will reverse an overdose. So a person who's overdosing on heroin, Oxycontin, uh, other narcotics, uh, you can administer Narcan and bring them right out of that overdose and save their life. Um, we've had the occasion here in Milford, the fire department have saved dozens of people, um, just in the past several years. Robbie Tosino, in the time that he's been here in Milford, he, he's more than twelve himself, and it's a mist. So, you arrive, uh, they'll receive two hours training from the physicians at Milford Regional Medical Center, uh, who oversee Robbie as it is, as a paramedic, uh, and it'll take two of the classes on each shift so that we catch every officer. And we'll deploy the Narcan in our first aid kits. Um, if the officer's the first one on scene, uh, for an overdose, they can administer the nasal mist, and, and it's incredible, the, the people come out of it in, in literally seconds. Um, so, we met with the doctors, uh, there are four other communities in Massachusetts that have the police officers with the Narcan. We do have it on every piece of fire apparatus here in Milford, uh, at this point in time. Robbie has it in his cruiser with his paramedic gear, and then, uh, it's also deployed on the ambulances, uh, here in town. So, we're, we're gonna take the number of, of the availability and, and literally double, if not triple it. Um, and it's a lifesaver. Um, the thing with Narcan is if you believe a person is overdosing and you administer it, if, in fact, they are not, it has no effect on them whatsoever. It, it can't harm them, uh, and all the studies, no effect at all. It, it's only recent that it's being deployed more widely, because it went from an, an injectable drug to the mist. Um, I met with, as I said, the physicians at the ER, and, and the three doctors, we talked about it, and I said, "Well, is there a downside to this?" And they said, "There's absolutely no downside at all. It's win-win. You, you're gonna save somebody's life." We worked out, because we have a good working relationship with Community Ambulance, who services our community with paramedics, uh, we met with the administrators from Community Ambulance, and they're willing to provide us with the Narcan on the prescription that, um, the doctors will give us from the hospital, but they're gonna give us the Narcan free for all of our vehicles, all the first aid kits. If we use it in the field, they'll replace it free of charge to the term as well. Um, so, the, we're the fifth police department that's deployed it in Massachusetts, um, and as I said, it, it's a lifesaver. The, the city of Quincy, they talk about it time and time again. In fact, there were Quincy officers that were assigned, excuse me, to the marathon in the city of Boston. And people who use drugs, they know, you know, where the Narcan's availability is, because that's how they're gonna save their own life or a friend. And, uh, an individual came up to the Quincy office when he saw the patch and said that his friend was overdosing. And they administered the Narcan before the ambulance arrived, and he was good to go. He could literally walk away.
But chief, it's, it saves lives, there's no cost. Um, and there's no negative effect should somebody be administered the drug if, uh, they're not overdosing on that type of drug, but a different type of drug. Uh, I, I don't see anything but win, and I appreciate your recommendation. I, I did want to ask, um, the types of drugs, it, it helps pull somebody, uh, out of an overdose situation, and, uh, specifically, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about what we see as in communities, talking a great deal about the rise of heroin use.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you had a second.
So, it, it'll reverse, uh, the overdose effect of heroin, morphine, uh, Fentanyl, oxymethadone, um, Percocet, Perkadian, Hydrocodone, and Vicodin. Um, so any of the opiates, and, and it'll reverse, uh, and take care of that situation. I mean, in Massachusetts, they recently, it was in the newspaper, um, from November first to the end of February, there were a hundred eighty-five deaths to overdoses. And that did not include any stats from the major cities. So Boston, Worcester, Springfield, uh, Brockton, Quincy, it was, it was the communities outside of the major cities. A hundred eighty-five deaths in, in such a short period of time. Um, in the past two years, we've experienced sixty, um, people that have overdosed here in Milford. So, and, and we've lost some, you know, they, they passed away. So, you know, th- th- this'll be a, a major boost in, in assisting people who are in need, um, and, and who are in dire straits to begin with, but maybe, you know, come out of it the one time you save their life, that might send them in the right direction to get help. So, that's the hope. Um, a- as I indicated, there's no downside to it. Availability of heroin, sadly, heroin's readily available, uh, and it's cheap. And what we see a lot of are individuals who, even who are prescribed, for instance, Oxycontin, and, and end up addicted to it. And now they can't get the prescription from the doctor. Oxycontin on the street's very expensive, as, as an, you know, illegal substance. Heroin's very cheap. So they're gonna get that same high, that same cover for their addiction, um, in using the heroin. As is the case with other drugs on the street, I mean, Oxycontin's an Oxycontin. It was manufactured under the, you know, FDA, uh, guidelines. Heroin, you don't know who, what we call stepping on, you don't know who's cutting it down, stepping on it, and what they're mixing in with it. And that's why, you know, they were using fentanyl, uh, in, in a high quantity, and that's, we saw a number of deaths, and that's, you know, in, in my business, we say, "Oh, there's bad heroin on the street," and we always have to catch ourselves, because I don't know any good heroin, but there, there's times when you see heroin out there, and, um, it's been cut in, in a way that it'll kill you. I mean, I, I've seen them where they use rat poison, uh, to cut it, baking soda, they use anything they get their hands on that's cheaper than the heroin. So, uh, do we see it? Um, yeah, unfortunately, yes. And we see really young people, too. I mean, the reports that I give to the board on licensed establishments, you'll recall that we had a, a young girl, you know?
Yeah.
In the bathroom in a local establishment. Uh, we had a young guy overdosed in, in another one, in a restaurant. So, i- it's here, um, we work it, so we work closely, we know it comes up. In our case, it comes up through Rhode Island, it's headed over towards Worcester, um, eh, you know, Framingham, Worcester, Marlborough. So we work very closely with, uh, the Wood Socket Police Department in particular, because they're the city that's closest to us, that's a major thoroughfare. Uh, and then we communicate, our detectives communicate every day with Marlborough, Framingham, and Worcester P.D. We exchange information every single day. Um, if they're, if they're active and, and they have individuals and they believe they're from Milford, uh, we'll work it with them, uh, and likewise, you know, they'll come this way. The other, uh, avenue is frankly neighbors, you know? If you see someone in your neighborhood and there's a lot of traffic in and out, um, they're not selling groceries, you know, so they're likely selling drugs. Uh, very easy, just let us know. We have a tip line, you know, at the police department, or, or go online, you know, send me an email. It's, we don't give out names of people that help us with information.
And you had talked in the past, one of the, a piece of advice, uh, that I heard from you one time was, you know, in terms of the Oxycontin and the, uh, Percocets and all of that, some of these young people are getting it out of their grandmother or their, their parents', uh, medicine cabinets, so some great advice there as to if they've got it and they don't need it, or they're saving it or storing it, which you see happen occasionally, get rid of it, and...
Right, and, and we do the collections, as you know, with the Drug Enforcement Administration. So several times a year, and we, we broadcast it through the news media, we let people know. Um, we try to do at least one of them at the senior center and, uh, allow people to bring in their drugs, and, and we'll dispose of them. We give them to, they end up at the Milbury State Police Barracks from all of the communities that do it, and then the DEA comes down with, you know, their truck, and they take them. And, and they destroy them in a way that's eco-friendly. You know, the problem that we're seeing across the country is people take narcotics and they think, "Oh, well, I'll just flush these down the toilet," and, and that's the end of it. Well, it's not the end of it, because it gets cycled back out there into the ground, you know, and has things filtered to make drinking water, and now you have drinking water that's tainted. Um, so, you know, don't dispose of drugs in that fashion. Uh, you dump them into a, a trash container, they end up in a landfill, you know, and what happens? The rain and everything else, and those things get absorbed into the ground as well. So, uh, keep an eye open for when we're doing the collections, and, uh, we're happy to take them. If you don't have an inability to leave your home and bring them, give us a call and we'll come to your home and take them, uh, and take care of it.
Chief, I appreciate, it's a worthwhile topic. I appreciate, uh, you staying on the front end of this, and, uh, I'll go to the board members and...
Good.
See if there's any comments and questions.
Yeah, no, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Chief, as you know, I called you two or three weeks ago when I read the article in the paper, and I was very alarmed about it. And we talked, and then you, you talked about the Officer Tosino, but you wanted to expand it to every, every officer and all that. And chief, and this is something that, uh, it's not, we're not start, not talking about just certain classes of, this is spread throughout all classes of society.
You can bet your life on it. It's, uh, you know, we, we've experienced overdoses here, but I'll be honest with you, you, you go, name the community in this state. You know, you, you can go the most affluent communities, you know, Westons and Wellesleys. Um, yeah, I've, I've dealt with, uh, young people who have that drug problem, and frankly, I mean, their parents have the means, they're willing to spend anything, uh, and, and they can spend almost anything to try to help their child out. Um, and then, then there are people who are up against it, you know, economically, and, and it's tougher for them. Um, but it, it's getting the person to wanna, they have to want the help, you know, and then it's a matter of finding them to help. And, and we do that as well.
So I, I think it, you know, fits in so well, protect and serve, and, um, and if you can save a life. And, and so hopefully, within a few months, all the officers will be trained as far as using that?
The plan right now is within the next thirty days, we'll, we'll have everyone trained. Uh, so we've been talking to Doctor Eric, uh, Doctor Gotke, uh, at the hospital, uh, and he's figuring out, you know, what other doctors will assist him, so that we can get it done as quickly as possible.
No, chief, so I commend you, nice job on that.
Thanks.
Thanks, Bill.
Right?
Yeah, obviously, good, good work. This is a huge problem, and, um, it's not solely related to Milford or, or even the Commonwealth. And, um, I, I just got back, I was down seeing Jack in Florida. The Orlando Sentinel, uh, ran a story, uh, about the increase of heroin overdoses in the Orlando area over the last two years. And I don't remember, but the numbers have just gone up exponentially. So I think it's nationwide. There's something going on, um, you know, where, where heroin is really just hitting the streets everywhere. And, um, you know, from, from what I've seen, you know, um, i- it's a killer, you know? They wind up in prison or dead.
Right.
You know, there's, there's not too many options, you know, once heroin comes in the door, so, um, you know, like you said, you know, maybe this, you know, this, this, this Narcan, you know, maybe if it does help one or two people, or however many can help, and if they can turn it around, if that can get them to turn the switch off, um, so be it. But at the very least, you've, you've saved a life, so, um, yeah, it sounds like a great, uh, program to, to, to be a part of. Now, you said, what, there's only five communities that are doing it?
Right, we're the fifth, so, um, Stodden, Norwood, Taunton, and Quincy. Now, there are many others that are looking at it because the Mass Chiefs, just after we developed our policy, the Mass Chiefs came out, um, with a policy because they're receiving requests from police chiefs across the state.
Yeah, good, well, good luck with it and, um, you know, I'm sure it'll work out well. And, uh, again, it'll serve as a model for other towns, other police departments.
Good luck, Chief.
Good luck, Chief.
Um, sure, I don't see any reason, we just have other agenda items. Uh, Chief, we just received a report, uh, from you, your office and you this week, uh, just recently, this last Friday, I think, uh, regarding the Royal Buddha and an incident that happened there. And, uh, maybe you could just go over the high points and certainly those that impact the potential for a license, a discussion about, uh, holding a hearing on that license.
The hearing request that I sent to the board is related to the fact that the incident is called into the police dispatch at twelve minutes after two in the morning. Um, on that particular evening, he was required to close his, he could not serve after 1:00 AM. And then he was required to have everyone off the premises by 1:30, as a matter of the general laws governing, uh, service of alcohol. Um, he continued to operate business, obviously, he readily admits that he was still selling food product. Um, the officers did not see any alcoholic beverages, uh, on the bar or on tables or anywhere near the people that were there. Um, they clearly ended that, indicated that to me. Um, however, he's still required to have those people off the premises at, at 1:30, and he didn't. Um, as far as the incident itself, uh, two individuals became, engaged in an argument. It escalated to them actually, uh, fisting cops with one another. At, at that point in time, the female bartender, she intervened in between these two big guys. Um, and one of them saw that was his chance to head for the door, which he did, and, uh, rather quickly. The individual that stayed, uh, then engaged in a confrontation, um, with that female bartender. Her boyfriend then stepped in. Um, the owner was struck several times, uh, choked, uh, threw a glass at him and hit him in the neck. Um, he was fearful of, you know, great bodily harm and even death. He was fearful for his employees. Uh, the size difference between the individuals is significant.
So you've saw criminal complaints against those that involved any assault?
So the, the bartender's boyfriend and the individual that was initially involved in the first altercation, uh, they were both placed under arrest right there by the police officers. Um, in, in looking at the situation as it relates to the owner, the owner did go back to his office. He called 911 and, and he retrieved a firearm, which he's licensed to have. Um, and he came out and he told the individual that he was armed, that he wanted him to leave. Um, he was then punched in the face again. Uh, so, you know, in looking at it, uh, you know, I, we had a conversation with the clerk magistrate, uh, and in the district attorney's office, uh, and, I mean, he's licensed to protect himself and he's licensed to protect others. And at that point in time, um, he was under threat of, of serious bodily harm.
Okay, so based on your recommendation, um, and the, the report that we received from you, we'll look to the, if, if the board members are so inclined, uh, to schedule a hearing for that license holder? And I'll go to the board members, see if there are any questions or comments related to the report.
No, Bill, I think it's pretty clear from what the chief said. And, uh, the write-up was, you know, well documented and confirms. And I think that, uh, you know, every once in a while, I mean, just as when we think that everything is okay, that things happen, so... But then I think we, we work on it and try to remedy the situation regarding, uh, suspension, revocation and sus- whatever. So I think it's, uh, most appropriate that we do something. Of course, we'll have to work with, with you, Chief Town Council, and we'll send out the appropriate letter and schedule the hearing.
I mean, given the time period, if he had cleared the premises by 1:30, there would have been no incident, so...
Yeah.
By the restrictions on licenses and hopefully we avoid these in the future, but when we make...
So Chief, even when he had a gun in his hand, the assailant still, still hit him or punched him in the neck or whatever. Smart person, huh?
Sure.
Yes, I'll, I'll say it.
I was just looking at the report and then listening to what you're telling me, is, is the manager the owner?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause it all refers to you, and he's the one that was hit by Stephen Frogger?
Yes, I wasn't sure if the premises, his father owned it, his father's deceased.
Okay.
I wasn't sure if, if the premises were, you know, still in the father's name and hadn't been passed yet, so...
Yeah.
My reference to him is the manager.
The manager, but that's still the, the same individual, and that's not the bartender?
No.
The bartender's someone separate?
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, this is obviously a very violent, uh, incident. And, um, I, I don't know about the other, uh, fellow, Kivior, but, uh, I know Frogger's been involved in a number of different incidents and, you know, has quite a record. But, um, you know, clearly, uh, I think the burden is on, on the Royal Buddha to comply with the terms of the license.
So make a mo- Yeah, make a motion that we schedule a, a hearing.
I'll second it.
I'm also in favor of that unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I think that concludes the chief's business this evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Now, we're gonna jump back to, uh, let's see, Larry Duncan, town planner regarding, uh, townwide geographic information system. I'm sorry, there are actually three items for Larry, but, uh, you guys are involved in this one, so, the GIS. Very welcome. Introduce, for those, uh, that don't know the others with you, why don't you go ahead and introduce? Scott just presented, but, uh...
Well, Scott Crisofoli, highway surveyor, Reno Deluzio, uh, planner emeritus.
That's right.
And I'm town planner. The, uh, the packet that you have, uh, now, Mr. Chairman, is a recommendation to, uh, put a warrant article on for a needs assessment and implementation plan to fund a townwide GIS. Uh, GIS, the geographic information system, which, uh, just briefly is a, an electronic mapping tool that various departments can use to, uh, manage and analyze data that's pertinent to their particular bailiwick. Uh, the planning board may be interested in, uh, where special permits have been issued over the last, uh, number of years or where variances are being issued, uh, and, and look for patterns there to be able to go back, look at the zoning bylaw and determine whether or not, uh, amendments might be made. Uh, the highway department obviously can use it to manage, uh, uh, street maintenance and, and Scott's here to be able to, uh, give you some specific information about that. Uh, obviously with the stormwater regs, uh, coming down the pike, no pun intended, um, the town engineer, as well as the highway surveyor, are gonna be able to rely on a, a electronic mapping system, uh, to manage that whole process. So, uh, we pretty much know where we stand now, which is nowhere. We don't have any capabilities, uh, to do actual in-house geographic information system, uh, mapping or analysis or any of the work. Uh, in fact, the, uh, maps, for example, the other night that, uh, I presented to this board about the, uh, open space issue, uh, I had to have printed, uh, in fact, Beals and Thomas printed those for us because we have no capability even to print our own maps. So I think the, we know where we are, what I think is necessary and, and what, uh, and what the proposal, uh, lines out is a, a needs assessment strategy and an implementation plan to be able to, uh, scope out where we ought to be going with, uh, this type of technology. Uh, and especially now, it dovetails with, um, two important things that have, that are happening. One, obviously, is our own IT, uh, investigations and starting a, an IT department and at least having a, uh, an IT director. But the other thing is happening at the state level. Um, USGS, as I mentioned in my memo, uh, is doing a, a new flyover. Uh, there's a consortium of, uh, government agencies, it's called, uh, Mass Ortho. And thanks to the Industrial Development Commission and, and Scott, we were able to, uh, buy in to that aerial flyover on behalf of the town. So the town will own, uh, ortho-corrected aerial imagery that's current. That'll be, uh, in essence, the basis for all mapping for the town going forward for a number of years. So, uh, I, I think it's important, uh, at least at this stage, to get the assessment done so we can, uh, tell how far out of date we really are and, and what benefits there are for a variety of departments, uh, to have this type of technology and have access to this technology. Uh, one of the issues that they mentioned, uh, you probably noticed in the, uh, in the assessment or in the proposal, um, is that, uh, things have changed quite a bit over the last several years so that it's not, uh, necessarily the assumption that the town's going to have to buy all kinds of hardware, uh, to make this work. There's a lot of information and, and hardware that's available virtually in the cloud uh, that, uh, the town would be able to utilize, uh, as opposed to actually buying more servers and, and more, uh, hardware and more PCs. Um, but in terms of the information, there's a lot of information that's available, uh, from government agencies, from Mass GIS at the state level that's also available, and in some instances, it's free. Our current web-based GIS, uh, actually allows you to view some of that information uh, in terms of the state wetlands map, that's available as an overlay in our, uh, web-based GIS system. Uh, some aerial photography has recently been updated, although it's, it's several years old already, but it was newer than what we had. Um, and other than the assessor's data itself, you can look at floodplains and topography and all of that information. If it's available on Mass GIS, we can use it on our web-based system, uh, free of charge. So, uh, I, I think it's an important, uh, tool, uh, for a variety of departments. I think what this is, uh, needs assessment will do is help, uh, educate departments that have no GIS capabilities now or even necessarily any knowledge of it, to become aware of what they could actually do and how they would benefit from having access to this kind of, uh, technology. But, uh, I'd ask Scott to hang around for a little bit, uh, so he could give you some specific examples in, in his department, uh, as, as to how a GIS system could help, uh, in, in road maintenance, for example. So, and Bonnie, I know, can, um, can relay some information in terms of the benefit of a GIS for, for our upcoming stormwater.
Yeah, Larry, this is, I talked to you before the meeting, this is one of the things I struggled with when I read the information. Uh, I wasn't sure what it is that we're not able to do today that's hurting our proct- productivity or efficiency, that on a day-to-day basis, this information would, would, uh, fix and how we'd utilize it in the future. It wasn't abundantly clear, so, you know, maybe the, at a very practical level, what is it that we're unable to do today that we need to do, that people will be able to do once the, once we expend the fifteen thousand that you're looking for, to get this, the, the system mapped, this town mapped?
Well, the, the fifteen thousand dollars is to pay the consultant to do the needs assessment. They would verify what information the departments have and what, uh, uh, what format it's in. We have very little information in a digital format. Uh, the majority of departments don't have any in digital format. Uh, the, our department has some information from a variety of different consulting firms, uh, that may be in a digital format, uh, but it's not necessarily all the same format simply because each project was different and different consulting firms, uh, had done it over time, uh, on their own equipment. So for, for us to be able to, uh, produce, uh, accurate maps, we have no capability to do that in-house. We have to hire somebody to do that. And as I mentioned, we can't even print, uh, some of the maps that, that we have access to uh, because we have no plotters or no hardware or software that would run a program to send, uh, to send a print command to a plotter. But in terms of managing, uh, various assets in town, uh, the street management programs, uh, uh, that would benefit Scott, as I say, Scott can relay the kinds of things operationally that he could benefit from immediately. So if, if, uh, let, uh, let Scott...
Scott? All right, well, well, the first big thing is stormwater mapping, which I, you've probably heard me talk about at our meeting. Uh, we have to start doing that. And, and you're gonna have someone come to town with a GPS and plot all our drains, all our drains, our inverts, and all this information that we're gonna have, to have that on a GIS system is where you wanna have it. I mean, you wanna be able to look on your computer and see your maps and see where everything is. You will see every drain, manhole, every catch basin, every outfall, and where all the piping goes, which we don't even know that right now. We don't have that much information in this town on paper, no plans. A lot of times, we have to, you know, spend days tracing drainage with dye to see where it actually goes, 'cause we don't know.
But they're not gonna do that.
Yes, they are.
They are gonna trace the drains?
Part of the mapping, yes.
Okay.
That's what we're gonna pay the big bucks for, but yes.
I have a better understanding.
So we'll actually be able to take all that information and have it on this system available to us, in a, you know, push of a button at any time. Um, you know, that's, that's, that's the major thing.
That's, that's one of the things I was looking for, is to, at a practical level, at the ground level. Rena, any? Yeah, please, please.
Just another practical example. I had a conversation today, actually, um, there is a regional stormwater study going on right now and they're assessing, um, Franklin, Bellingham, Milford, Ashland, and a couple of the other towns. Uh, what we have for stormwater capabilities, what we, how, how much do we know about our own stormwater systems? That type of thing. And with the new permit that's gonna be coming out from EPA, they all wanna know where all of our BMPs are. BMP stands for best management practice and it's something like a stormwater retention basin or an infiltration system, um, even down to the deep sump catch basins that, um, the highway department maintains. And right now, we have that information, but it's on this subdivision plan over here and this subdivision plan over here. With the GIS system, we can bring it all into a central place. So then it will save town staff time and effort looking up that information when we need to do it. We can also use the GIS system as sort of a maintenance operation control system. Um, so when EPA says to us, okay, every five years, we want you to do a full inventory on all your BMPs and maintain them, um, you know, we can say, okay, so we did this twenty percent this year. We can give them the exact locations and exact maps of where they are. So it's, it's a pretty critical tool for the work we're gonna have to be doing, having down the line.
And I appreciate that, that's helpful in also giving me, uh, information related to the, the question. Larry, the fifteen thousand dollars, is this, uh, besides the needs assessment? Is it the actual mapping?
No, not at all.
So we won't have that when the town expends the fifteen thousand dollars?
Correct, you'll get a needs assessment and an implementation plan based on what they can determine we have or don't have, in our case, uh, and make some specific recommendations in terms of how to go forward. And especially in the context with the IT study, uh, to verify, uh, what condition, uh, other computing capabilities may or may not be in, uh, again, to be able to make recommendations as to whether to, uh, look at, uh, more virtual server-type cloud computing versus buying hard computers to sit in a room somewhere and be able to benefit from some of those kinds of efficiencies and save us, save us money.
Larry, you said?
So that would, that would, there would be, excuse me, just to follow on on that. Uh, so there would, should be some specific rec- cost recommendations or cost estimates based on those recommendations so we can judge, uh, you know, whether to do it at all or not. Uh, hopefully, we'll do something, but then to know which direction to go and what it's gonna cost us and what we're gonna be getting into, depending on the direction that we choose.
So Franklin, Franklin has GIS?
Yes.
They've mapped their entire community. Do you know what they spent on their effort?
I don't know what the costs are, but that's a, that's a perfect example. If, if anyone wants to, uh, uh, see something in operation, we've kind of got a standing, uh, invitation from, from, um, from Jeff Nutting to, to, to view their system. But, uh, and, and we were there, but we didn't, uh, we didn't review that and didn't get into any specifics in terms of costs.
Okay, I'll, I'll go to the board members, Steve?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I, when this first came, we first received it, I called Bonnie and we spoke a couple of times and, uh, she educated me on, on what we're trying to do. And, uh, and I spoke to Larry, um, you know, talk about sewer water, storm water. Uh, I think it would be a tremendous tool for our professionals. But also at some point, we can also, uh, in the future, assist if a resident came forward, just like when residents come down and they need help with zoning or planning and all that. A couple of years ago, they were doing some work on Fruit Street. And I don't know if they were sewer or water, whatever the case. But I remember when, after talking to these two gentlemen, they said, oh my God, we really don't know where these pipes are. And it just, you know, brought me, when I spoke to you, Bonnie, it brought me back to that. So, you know, it's also a safety, besides having a professional, another tool for all of you to utilize. It's also a safety thing too, to, to be able to have a, a digital, where are all these, uh, how many times have we spoken to the sewer department where they use those cameras going in? So, I mean, this would be a tremendous asset to that as well.
Well, from, from my point of view, you know, we would know where every pipe is in the road. Eventually, we'd have all that information, gas, water, sewer, drainage, electric, phone. We will know where all that is by just looking on the maps. That's, that's the ultimate goal, is to have all that information in hand.
And instead of, you know, seeking and trying to find something, as you said, Scott, I mean, this would be a tremendous benefit to all of you. And I think it...
Right, we, I mean, we use DigSafe to, you know, if we're gonna dig a hole, you gotta do that.
Right.
But, but when we're trying to plan a project,
Sure.
it's very difficult to know what's in the road and where it is.
So I would think that if you, you know, wanna make something professional and have something that can be a tremendous benefit to all of you and then also to the resident, at, at some point, when he or she comes in and asks questions, then I think this is the, uh, the way to go. And I think that's what, you know, most other, uh, progressive communities have, have done. So the, the cost, as the chairman asked, the fifteen thousand... So, the, the cost, as the chairman asked, the fifteen thousand, Larry, that's the first step?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's to scope out what we have and where we might wanna go and how to get there if we decide to do it.
Okay. And I'm sure the sewer commissioners are on board a hundred percent as well.
Are they?
Scotty, the sewer commissioners?
Honestly, I've never actually talked to them about it.
Okay.
I, I look at it more, you talked about the stormwater mapping, that's a whole separate issue. That's, I don't wanna tell you how much that's gonna cost, but, you know, we might as well utilize all that money and have it somewhere where we can actually utilize it, basically, you know? So...
So, you know, in my discussions with Vani and you, Larry, and from the literature, uh, you know, I think I'm sold on it, and I would, uh, support the, uh, the request going forward.
Okay. Thanks, Dean. Brian?
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, it's pretty clear that, um, in today's day and age, we're, we're really behind the eight ball if we don't start getting into this, this area. I mean, you look at the opening paragraph of this, um, consultant's report, um, it says, you know, Milford is in the minority of Massachusetts towns, uh, that does not employ in-house G I S technology, of which about two-thirds do. And most of the towns that don't are small rural communities. So, when you talk about the kind of community that Milford is, um, clearly, I think that this kind of technology is, is extremely useful. And, um, it says here about eighty towns have a staff person, must be a solely dedicated G I S person or must be part of their duties. Medway, Northborough, Westborough, Oxford, Hudson, Natick, Shrewsbury, um, yeah, I, I, I understand. To me, as I read this, we, we don't even know what we don't know. So, you know, this, this type of study's going to basically, um, I guess, you know, see what's here and then provide us a, uh, plan going forward, um, which I suppose would have optional costs. I, I assume the plan is gonna have different options, and that's something that you can look at and then get back to us and recommend as to what makes sense, what does not. But, um, for this consultant's report here, um, I, I, I would clearly support this, this article for town meeting.
Okay.
Want a motion?
Please.
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
I'll second it.
All right. I'll vote in favor, that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Walden Woods and, uh, Trail Bond, um, request. And this is, uh, to the Board of Selectmen from Larry Duncan. Larry, maybe you could give us the background of this, uh, put it in context. Your memo makes it clear, but for the benefit of those in the audience or at home.
Sure. Well, just briefly, Mr. Chairman, uh, part of the, uh, approval for the Walden Woods development, uh, which is a planned residential development, uh, included, uh, completion of Phase Three of the Upper Charles Trail. They, uh, had proposed, uh, constructing Phase Three in lieu of providing the over fifty-five, uh, units in the development, uh, so they could retain their density bonus, uh, that they'd originally gotten, uh, when they first got their planned residential development approved. Part of the whole scheme and, and build-out timing requirements in the special permit, uh, was tied to, uh, when they got their, uh, one-hundred-and-ten building permit, and if, uh, for some reason, the Phase Three of the trail wasn't done, they would put up a bond, uh, for the, for the difference. They're at, in fact, a little beyond that point, um, because of a glitch in the, uh, permit tracking software. So, uh, they went to the planning board, uh, and got the, um, uh, tripartite agreement approved. Part of the, um, special permit had specific criteria and requirements for determining the value, uh, of work, uh, for any, any uncompleted portion. Uh, the town engineer had reviewed that, and, uh, there should be a copy of her memo and the, um, summary chart, uh, attached to, in the packet. Uh, and then following that is the actual tripartite agreement, or the text of the agreement. Uh, the planning board signed it the other night. The, uh, owners and the bank are signing it, uh, hopefully as we speak, or maybe it's already done. Uh, and until we get that back, there are no building permits, uh, being issued for Walden Woods, uh, based on the language in the, uh, in the special permit decision.
So, Larry, my quick take on this is, uh, the developers of Walden Woods are not meeting their, their end of the bargain in terms of the agreement for having been at a certain place at a certain time with the trail. Is that fair to say?
Well, they got more units built quicker than they thought, so, yeah, they're, it's not so much that they're not meeting the requirements.
Let me get to that in a minute. Because, uh, I'm gonna explore in a, in a second, the, your reference to the glitch in the permit tracking software. Um, but they should've been further along and knew that we would impose a bond on them if they weren't where they should be by now. And that's exactly what we're doing, is ba, based on that agreement. Is that right?
Well, correct. They, they are beyond their one-hundred-and-ten permit, um, and, uh, the trail isn't done. So, based on the requirements of the special permit, they need to bond for the balance of it.
Okay.
And then, when the bond is posted, uh, they can start getting building permits again.
Can you explain further the why, how we got to nine more permits than we had promised them, and now we're over? Can you explain that glitch in the permit tracking software a little?
Well, I think there, there, there are two reasons for the, for the, uh, overage. Uh, one is the permit tracking software, um, came into, came into being after Walden Woods started, and a number of the permits that had been issued by the previous building commissioner were actually issued, um, as duplex permits. So, the new system, uh, in terms of being able to scan that information into the new system, uh, it was only, would only pick up half of the units, so that was a problem. Uh, the other problem ended up not having anything to do with us, but, uh, it was my understanding that, uh, members of the developers team, uh, were assuming that, uh, the one-hundred-and-ten number went with occupancy permits. And when it doesn't, it goes with building permits, and then the, uh, decision says building permits. So, uh, between the two areas of confusion, shall we say, there were some one-hundred-and-nineteen permits total issued, as opposed to them coming a month earlier, whenever, to do this bond, uh, when they were seeking the one-hundred-and-ten.
Our software's fine. It's the way we entered the data.
So, the software's fine. Right.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
Yep. So, yeah, no problem with the software. And the reason, Mr. Chairman, that it, that I brought it to your attention is that, as you recall, the selectmen are, uh, co-applicant, because it's town-owned land, and it's the town's Upper Charles Trail. So, we're required to keep you in the loop, obviously, uh, and, uh, once we discovered this and they posted the bond, um, as I say, I don't have final signed copies for us yet, but, uh, I felt it was appropriate that you see the text and know where we are.
And Larry, honestly, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. I'm disappointed, uh, in whatever office, um, contributed to issuing nine more permits than was, was allowed by the, the permits that we issued. I think holding builders and developers, uh, to their agreements is, uh, something incumbent upon the town to, to watch and monitor, and frankly, that's what the taxpayers pay for. But, uh, I'll go to the other members of the board. Again, I, I wanna make sure, I appreciate you bringing it forward so that we could stop it at one-hundred-and-nineteen instead of one-hundred-and-thirty-five, but, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Yeah, Larry, I just think that, Rick, I think, you know, it, it did happen, we just have to make sure that, you know, it doesn't happen again in the future. I think, uh, I think we did buy software in the past also. So, we, the allowed number of permits, it was nine over the, the one-ten.
Right.
And, and here it says it was brought to the attention, how was it, was it, was it a letter, was it someone just came in and said they made a mistake, or was it caught? How was it?
Well, there were, there were more, there's more than one way that we discovered it. Uh, Reno and I had talked about it, and we've, we've been talking about this from the get-go in terms of tracking it and making sure, uh, who's doing what at what time. Um, I don't know that there was any malicious intent on the part of the developer, but certainly, they're going gangbusters with the development, which generally is something we are happy about. Uh, my concern, and I think Reno's concerned, too, and the planning boards, is that, uh, the, the trail get done on schedule, uh, which it looks like it probably will, but at this stage, that's not the point. Uh, they're over their number of permits and, uh...
And they're not gonna enforce on themselves. Let's be honest. We're not gonna expect them to say, hey, you know, you should really be asking us for a bond at this point. Right? Go ahead, Reno.
Yeah. Well, obviously, I live there, so I can see the rate of development is going at a pretty good clip. So, I'm saying to myself, boy, this guy's gotta be getting awful close to that one-hundred-and-ten unit, because I was part of this agreement when, when it was originated.
Right.
So, I happened to measure to Larry, I said, Larry, we oughta check into this, 'cause he's getting very, very close, I think. So, sure enough, they went, Larry did, and found this glitch in the system and...
Well, thank you for calling and bringing our attention.
Yeah. Well, you know, the trail is very dear to my heart, so...
It is.
I gotta keep an eye on all sorts of things around here, uh, because it can unravel at any point. Uh, so, anyway, yeah, so I think it all worked out. Uh, Vani did an estimate, I think the, the bond is, they're about forty percent, uh, completed, uh, that was a probably nine-hundred-thousand-dollar estimated job. The bond, I think, is five-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars.
Five-thirty-four.
Five-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand. Seems like a reasonable number to finish. Uh, so, hopefully, uh, they won't, we won't have to use it. Hopefully, by October.
Are you comfortable with the number, Reno?
Uh, yeah, well, we, we were constrained, anyway. We had, we had this estimate, which, uh, I was not too comfortable with in the first place, but in any event, uh, the, the planning board's special permit condition says, for the unit quantities we estimated and the dollar values for those quantities, it is what has to be used in determining the remainder of the work. So, given, if our original estimate was, was off, this is off. But we won't know that, and hopefully, like I say, the contractor has been acting in good faith so far, uh, and he will finish the job, and we won't have to draw on the bond.
All right. Y'all said.
Was it you or your better half who found out about the extra units? Probably a better half, right?
No, no, no.
All right. No, I think, um, you know, it is what it is, but I think, Larry, I think you're the administrator, it was a glitch, I mean, you just have to make sure the glitch doesn't happen again. There has to be a better way of...
Yeah. And as soon as they...
Researching or...
As soon as we brought it up, they came forward.
Monitoring, whatever.
Got it done, so...
Okay, Rick?
Yes.
Yeah. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dean. Brian?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I don't think that this is a major catastrophe at all. I mean, there's a lot more units to be done, they've got a lot more work to do before they get released in Milford. Um, and, and as I understand it, the, the, uh, work on the trail is progressing. Um, well, is, is their target date October?
Yeah.
So, um, you know, they're still within, you know, their time schedule on that, and, um, that's fine. I understand, you know, we had changeover at the building department, we had an older individual that, uh, was not as computer savvy as the present individual, and, um, you know, things happen. It's okay. It's not the end of the world. Everything's fine. No reason to get excited.
We'll, we'll eventually be able...
We're okay.
We'll eventually be able to go back.
Because we can count. That's all I wanna make sure, who's got a computer does it, we can do not account.
Eventually, we'll be able to go back and re-enter all those old permits.
I think we're okay.
Know where we are.
Yeah. It's, you know, it's a unique type of project. I don't know if, you know, it's happening in too many spots around the state. I think it's gonna benefit both the, uh, commercial developer and the town of Milford. So, fine.
So, you need a motion, Steve?
No, no actions required, but I felt it was appropriate...
Yeah, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Get it to you as soon as possible.
Okay. And now you have zoning amendments.
Yeah, well, I, I can just go through them quickly if, if you want. It's getting late.
Yeah, it is getting late.
Got other stuff to do.
You know, here's what I'm missing for this, these bylaws, proposed zoning bylaw amendments, the rationale behind them. So, it may be more helpful, because it would go a long time if we were gonna provide all of the rationale behind each of them.
Uh, that I can do it really quickly.
Okay.
Let me just take a quick shot at it. The first one, uh, deals with adding, uh, some uses, uh, in the use chart for the business park and industrial zones.
Excuse me. I'm gonna excuse myself.
Step out.
But before I do, Bill, I wanna thank you again for speaking on the Upper Charles Trail Public Forum on Saturday.
It was my pleasure. Thank you, Reno.
It was a great event, and I think you made a great contribution, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Very kind. Thank you.
Thanks, Reno. Good night.
Bye, Reno.
Thanks, Reno. Uh, so, the, the first proposal was to add life science, uh, research and development, uh, scientific research and development, uh, as use categories in the business park and the industrial districts, uh, to clarify that those expanded types of uses, um, are, are allowed in the zoning district. Um, and, and, uh, the Industrial Development Commission, as well as the planning board, uh, felt that that was appropriate, uh, to help clarify, uh, a range of uses that would be allowed in that zoning district. The, um, the second amendment talks about swimming pools by deleting language relating to swimming pool fences. Right now, our zoning bylaw is in direct conflict with the state building code, which is a definite no-no, so, uh, this will fix that. State statute doesn't allow you to, uh, fiddle with building code items with your zoning bylaw. Uh, the third one would, uh, update the site plan application process section of the bylaw, uh, just so that it accurately reflects what happens. Uh, what's currently occurring is, is, uh, reflected in the amendment. Uh, it's not improper under the current bylaws, just that the current bylaw, uh, needs to be expanded to include everything we do, uh, and that will help, uh, developers, when they read the bylaw, to know what to expect. Usually, we have pretty good rapport with, with developers contacting me, uh, ahead of time, anyway. Uh, the fourth one is to change the use regulation schedule, uh, by prohibiting gas stations in the downtown C A., uh, Central Commercial District. Uh, as you're probably aware, the C A. is the, the tight downtown area, uh, between the police station and the Tom Building. Um, both sides are both frontages of Main Street. There hasn't been a gas station downtown, uh, for a number of years. Uh, most recently, uh, the last gas station was the Shell Station where the seven-eleven is now. But, uh, that use at that site was pretty much a disaster traffic-wise, and as, as much of a traffic generator as seven-eleven stores are, that's still, uh, an improvement, uh, on that site compared to what it was with the auto-related uses. There are no other auto-related uses allowed in that zoning district now, uh, and we finally got rid of the last gas station, so my thought and the planning board's thought, uh, and I D C., for that matter, because we did discuss it a few times at the Industrial Development Commission meeting, uh, would be to, uh, amend the zoning bylaw now to reflect the fact that there aren't any downtown, and it's a bad idea to have them downtown. Uh, so that one last station is now gone, uh, that's what this amendment does.
So, there are planning board votes and, uh, and I D C. votes recommending this?
There wasn't an I D C. formal vote, but we discussed it at I D C., and there was a general consensus that that made sense.
Okay.
'Cause it's such a small district, just the tight downtown area.
Okay, Dean?
No, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Brian?
Yeah, you're batting three out of four with me, Larry. I'm okay with the top three. I can't go along with the last one, so, that's what I'm asking.
Okay. Any, any?
I mean, are we looking for motions right now?
Well, the planning board was hoping that you could remand these for public hearing, so it's more of a ministerial act at this point.
Help me, Brian, because...
I'd move to remand it to the planning board for public hearing.
Okay, all right.
That's the stage where it...
Second.
Okay, I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Next, we have, in very late, Deputy Chief, Fire Chief William Toohey regarding the fire chief position. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you. Thanks for having me.
You know, one of the things we talked about is having you here. One of the things we obviously voted upon is having Town Council and Town Administrator enter into contract negotiations, given John's, Chief Toohey's retirement decision. And so we wanted to bring you in here to give you the opportunity to talk about at least what you see the department going. This is not like somebody new who's coming from out of town who might want to sit back for a year, but the question is, you know, what do you see, you know, for the future of the fire department? And I wanted to hear that a little bit.
Right now, we're obviously at a stage of a transition with the changing of the chief. We've also, the group that I came on with in the early eighties is now reaching retirement. And so we have a large influx of young firefighters coming on board. We have roughly, almost a quarter of the department has less than two years' experience. In particular, we have nine with less than a year. Our, our main goal right now is to get them trained, get them up to speed. They're going to go to the academy. There's four going within the next two weeks, so leave them for the academy for nine weeks. But when we get them back, we have to get them street spot, show them the way we do things, you know, really get them to learn the town, the proper way to be a firefighter, dealing with the public. So there's a lot involved with training. The training position has been somewhat of a revolving door of late only because the people that happened to get in there retired shortly thereafter, so it has become a little bit of an unstable position. We're looking to get that. We have a new young lieutenant on there, Lieutenant Geis, and he's just finishing up school now, so we're going to be looking to expand the training position, get back into the daily routine of training every day, especially working with the young kids to really get them up to speed and get them going. I'd also like to see the expansion of working with the seniors, get some programs going at the senior center and, you know, maybe a little bit more involved with the schools if we can, you know? A lot of this stuff, unfortunately, has a financial aspect to it. Inspection services, Lieutenant Nelson does a great job with that now. We can be doing more. He's almost overburdened with the amount of stuff between the task force work he has to do, the residential inspections, plan review. If we had another inspector, you know, we could expand that out and get into a lot of places that we're not doing now that are falling between the cracks, get into the service stations, get into the repair facilities, the auto body places that we just don't have the time to get into right now. So it's a lot of just continuing to build upon what the previous chiefs have established and get ourselves back into the routine of training. Those would be the highlights.
Any thoughts about emergency management, that structure, what we do going forward from the emergency management standpoint?
We've got to work with that. I'm not as familiar with the emergency management as the present chief is, but we'll work with that. Like to keep it within the fire department, if possible, and, you know, we'll, we'll set something up between myself, the deputy to be, and some of the train, the administrative officers.
Okay. I'll go to the other members to make sure they have thoughts and comments.
Yeah, Billy, certainly want to wish you well.
Thank you.
I think I told you about 10 years ago, hey, maybe you'll be chief someday. Well, it's happening, right?
It is.
And I think over the past, been involved with four chiefs, and I think as each chief came in, they, they took their time, they listened to everybody, talked to everybody, and then started developing initiatives and programs and all that. You know, I, I think the department's in great shape. I think, you know, John, John did a great job and he's a good administrator. And the thing that I think we're most proud of, I mean, the support of the officers, the ceremony that you have every, every June at the, at the station is really something that, I mean, there's legacy there. It's important what happens and it's camaraderie among the officers and you work very well together. I'm sure there are times when there is disagreement, but I think when it's all said and done, everybody is out there to serve the public, to do what's best. And, you know, of course, I think we have a tremendous reputation in the area. Whenever I travel anywhere and I say some from Milford, they always talk about the fire department and all that, and they always mention the chiefs.
Good to hear.
So I think that, you know, I think the bar has been set very high. You know, to me, that, like you said, the training aspects to make sure that, you know, when someone submits a proposal for development or a permit, that it's, it's really that you, you know, look at it and the lieutenants, whatever the case may be, to make sure that when we sign off on it, it's the right thing.
Right.
Training's most important, EMT, all that type of stuff. As you know, the, the position of fire chief has really evolved over the years with issues of homeland security, working with the hospital. And, you know, I think we have, we have two, you know, very wonderful fire stations, you know, maybe down the road, you know, maybe they, you know, in 10 years, whatever the case may be, there probably should be something on the other end of town because I know that's always a concern, you know, with the traffic and all that. So maybe at some point, the town can afford something else to protect the people in those areas. So one thing is certain, you know, work very closely with the administrator, let the administrator know what's happening. We really don't get involved, you know, we trust and, and respect the position. And if there's anything that you need as far as support, you know, we're only a phone call away. And, you know, we should have, this is a nice situation to follow your brother and it's quite an honor to your family. And I think the people at Milford are also very content with that, too. So good luck, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Brian?
Chief Toohey, sounds familiar. Yeah, congratulations and, you know, I know you do a great job in leading the department. You've been there certainly long enough to understand, I think, what the needs are. I think you're intelligent enough to give it the guidance that the department needs and then also to work on the areas that you might not feel as strong or as comfortable in to get that strength, either through staff or increased education or training or whatever it may be. But I'm fully confident with you leading the department forward.
Good, thank you.
Congratulations. Good to see you again and wish you all the luck in the world.
Thank you very much.
Bill, I want to echo the comments made by the others in that, you know, we voted on this and to go in this direction because we have the confidence. You've been our deputy chief for a very long time. It's nice when we can go through the progression after the community, you've worked your way through the ranks and the community supported you in doing that, both in education and time. I'm glad to hear that training is a big part of what you're going to be doing going forward. And just want to wish you all the, all the best and as soon as the contract negotiation discussion is concluded, I look forward to making that, finalizing that appointment.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck, Bill.
Take care.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Take care.
Next, we have Town Administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All budgets under the jurisdiction of the board are on target. I do want to remind everyone, the warrant for the annual town meeting closes this Thursday, March 13th. I want to provide an update on the windows. The subcontractor, GVW, has confirmed the equipment and paint to be used in the renovation of the windows. They've ordered balances, weather stripping, glazing, paint. One large test window has been removed from the second floor and reinstalled and is functioning very well. We have learned that the two ocular windows do not need to be replaced and will be renovated and reinstalled on March 21st. Tomorrow, nine of the large upper town hall windows will be taken by GVW to their shop to be renovated. The estimated return time and reinstall time is two weeks. We hope that the upper town hall windows should be completed in about six weeks. After that, they will move to the first floor windows. We hope they will take about another six weeks to renovate and then the basement windows should take an additional two weeks. Also included in this will be repairs to the front doors. Substantial completion should be by the end of June or the first week in July. Also, an update on the new telephone system at town hall. We have done some preliminary work to make that installation a possibility. We hope to install and we should be activated on Thursday, March 20th. We're working closely with total communications representatives and Worldband to prepare, to make sure we are ready for the install and activation on that date, so a couple of weeks. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Outstanding. Any questions or comments for...
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. No, good to see, good to see progress made on some of the votes that town meeting made in support of this building, the windows, telephone system. And I know you've got a lot on your plate, Rick, and doing a great job.
Thank you.
Next, we have old business, review of the town treasurer recruiting process.
Yes, thank you. As we know, the position of town administrator was advertised in the Beacon, Daily News, Town Crier posted on the Beacon website and the town website.
Town Treasurer.
A town treasurer. What did I say?
Your position.
Oh, jeez, oh, boy, I'm out already? Thought I could make a year anyway.
A place for you to replace yourself.
We've got 14 good candidates here, anyway. Sorry about that. Boy, that Freudian slip. We received 14 applicants for the position. Town Council, Jerry Moody and I interviewed six candidates. We started on Thursday, did some on Friday. Due to illness for two of the candidates, we had to conclude the interviews this morning. After interviewing the six candidates, all of whom we felt were well-qualified in experience, we are recommending the following candidates for interview by this board. In alphabetical order, Kelly Capice, Irene Lauterwee, and Neil A. Vida. Subject to the board's approval, I will schedule the interviews for Monday, March 17th, beginning at either 6:00 or 7:00 PM, depending on the, the board's pleasure. We may have one other minor item, well, actually, major item on the agenda beforehand, but that's all we would schedule. So I'll look for guidance on, from the board on when they would want to schedule. I would recommend probably half-hour intervals to 40-minute intervals for the interviews. And if the board has a particular process that they would like to use, such as an opening statement, that followed by questions, I would look for guidance in that vein also.
All right. Want to go to the board members and ask them then? Dean?
Yeah, thanks, Bill. No, Mr. ... Rick, nice job with Town Council. You know, like you said, you had 14, 15 people, six were interviewed down to three and, yeah, I would think that, you know, some of the questions, the format that you and Jerry asked the individuals, I think would be an opening statement. Of course, we're going to have the resumes, the experience that they've had in the communities, doing what, do these responsibilities. Also, maybe a little synopsis from you as far as there, you know, the things that are important to us, insurance, debt, debt service, formulating that, working as a team with financial department heads. So, you know, I think we're looking, well, I, I said that it was an important position and that the reason why we wanted to change it from elected to appointed was to get the most qualified person, someone who's had experience, the education, and so I'm looking for that. And, and hopefully, one of those individuals will, will fill, will fill the void that we have presently.
Thank you, Dean. Brian?
Yeah, so we're looking to do interviews next Monday. Do, do we have a time or is it...
We don't, we haven't scheduled anything.
I didn't schedule, I get, the board wanted to go earlier than the usual 7:00 time. I didn't know if that was the pleasure of the board.
Yeah, because if you're going to do three people, if you allocate an hour each, if you start at six, we'll be done in five.
Yeah, that should be more than enough time, I would think.
You know, I, I don't have any problem with that.
Me neither.
I mean, you know, personally, you know, I find it interesting if, if the individual, you know, up to five minutes, just talks about whatever he or she would like to. And oftentimes, that in and of itself tells us something about the individual. You know, no format, you know, whatever he or she thinks that they might bring to the community or to the job. And then after that, you know, I'd be content with just having rounds of questions.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. I don't know that we'd need, you know, more than an hour for each person, probably be 45, something less than that.
Okay.
Rick, could you have, I know for your position, we did this and I'd like to do this for this position as well. There was, they, they provided, you provided educational verification of that education that people had received, whether certificate courses or formal education. I know this board has discussed at length the education requirements of this position. The other thing is references.
Yes, each applicant was told that, that would be likely that you would be requesting probably three references.
So as early as those three candidates could get those to us, the more prepared this board is to...
Absolutely.
To hold those. Any other requests by the board members before we set that agenda?
If you think of something, just tell the administrator, that's all. Or if Brian has anything, just let him know.
So starting at 6:00?
Yep.
Scheduling, why don't we schedule for 45 minutes each?
Okay.
Giving us a little buffer in between and collect our thoughts and make our notes.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've talked about the other old business. Do the board members have anything else for old business?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Brian?
No.
Okay. Under new business, Milford Lions Club, permit to obstruct, there's a request.
Motion.
I'll second.
All right, signed by the police chief. I'll vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next item, we have seasonal club license renewals. We have them for Maspinock Rod and Gun Club and Sons of Italy Dramatic and Sportsman's Club.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
So vote in favor, that's unanimous. We also have correspondence to Rick Belloni from Town Engineer Vani Reese in response to a letter from Deborah Campbell of Three Plain Street conducted, she had conducted an onsite inspection both ends of Plain Street. She's looking at specifically the concern that vehicles are traveling the wrong way. It's Vani's recommendation that the signs are clear and that if there's any issues associated with people going in the wrong direction, they're ignoring the posted signs. So she's requesting that enforcement in the street suggesting that it's warranted to stop that practice.
Motion.
There's also communication from Deb Campbell. So I, I would say that the message here was, it would be to formalize that request to the chief and I'm sure there's email trail to that, that effect, but it was formalized.
Yes.
All right. Any other comments as relates to that topic? No? Okay.
Do we have a motion to accept the recommendation of Vani?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Second, yeah, the recommendation is not to change anything, but to enforce.
I think she, I think she also suggested the posting of two wrong-way signs at either end of Plain Street.
Okay, yeah, you're right.
So in addition to what already exists, that's all.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion?
Yes.
Seconded, Brian?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Vote in favor, that's unanimous. Okay. Next, we have Town Administrator regarding elected officials and FY '15 salary recommendation.
Yes, I provided the board with elected officials fiscal year '15 salary recommendation. It basically shows fiscal year '14 and it shows a, this, this particular chart shows a 2% for both the full-time and part-time. You do note that the, obviously, the treasurer has been removed from that list since that will now be an appointed position. As you know, personnel board is in the midst of doing the classification and compensation study. So their recommendation for Article II personnel at this point is just a 3% adjustment for budgets, but not final. So I wanted to see what this board would like to do with the elected officials. Various departments have been asking, you know, to try to complete their budgets, what the intent of this board would be.
Okay, and specifically, we're talking about town clerk, tax collector, assessor, chairman, assessor members, highway surveyor, tree warden, selectman, chairman, selectman member, burning Grove trustees, board of health chairman, board of health members, sewer commissioner, sewer commissioner members, chairman, park commissioner, chairman, park commissioner members, planning board chairman, planning board members, and town moderator. Any thoughts? I'll go to the board members. Dean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, Rick, as far as the town clerk, tax collector...
Highway surveyor?
Yes, that would be a 2%?
Yeah, everything here reflects 2%, but yes.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, my, I just, my comfort level and I think for the past four or five years, a little bit longer... the past four or five years, a little bit longer, I think, as far as we're concerned, we've recommended a zero increase. And I just, it's small money, it's not, maybe symbolic, whatever the case may be, but I just think that as far as one person here, I think that salaries for fiscal year '15 should be identical to fiscal year '14 as far as the chairperson and selectmen members.
Okay. Brian, any thoughts?
I would support the recommendation, 2% for all elected officials.
Okay. Would like to make a motion in that effect.
I move to accept the proposed sheet.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, not hearing a second. Dean?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we go along with the recommendations as stated by the administrator, 2% for fiscal year '15. However, the salary for Selectman Chairman and Selectman Member would remain at 82.99 and 73.74.
As a matter, just as a matter of process, I have a motion that's been made, so I just, I guess what I'm looking for is either a second...
No, not, okay, I will second that. It's tidy.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor? Brian, you made the motion, so I'm assuming you're in favor. I made the second. Dean, can you, are you comfortable with that second? Or, I'm sorry, the...
No, different from what I said, no.
So that's two in favor, one opposed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the schedule of the... I'm sorry. Is there anything else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, on Sixth Fruit Street, like to obtain the, the Planning Board had an article on this particular property. I'd like to ascertain the direction that the Building Commissioner will, with his recommendations and what he feels should be as far as Sixth Fruit Street. And I know we tried this before, Brian and Bill, but can we try again on, talk about gas stations on, the gas station on Cedar Street, if we can try to make, if the administrator could make contact with the owners of that property again to ascertain if something could be done, the schedule. Now I see that there are all kinds of cars parked, and cars and trucks parked at that location during the day. So it'd be also interesting to find out what the purpose of that is.
Okay.
Because I don't think there's any hot tub, so all that stuff must seep into the ground and all that. So if we can do that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that'd be interesting.
No, I was just trying, what's Sixth Fruit Street?
Go to the Getty Station.
Across from the playground on Fruit Street.
Oh, Fruit Street.
Fruit Street.
Fruit Street. I was just trying to, I don't recall what we're doing with Sixth Fruit Street.
No, there's a, it used to be a junkyard that was let, I don't think we, we missed the ball on that. And now, I guess, the individual is a, it's a one family, trying to make it to a two-family, but he had started without going to the apartment.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, oh, so you're just asking the building inspectors...
Yeah, recommendations, what he's going to do and all that.
Okay, I didn't...
Because I jumped to Getty, because that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, no, the other one is Getty on...
Yeah, I didn't know what the Sixth Fruit Street was.
Yeah.
Okay. Brian, any new business?
No.
Okay. Okay. That does conclude the activities for our normally scheduled open session. We do have executive session tonight. The scheduled appointments are discussions with council regarding international collective bargaining issues for Labor's International, Milford Water Company discussion regarding potential purchase and process, collective bargaining for dispatchers, and employment contract proposal for the Fire Chief. All those in favor of executive session?
Aye.
I also vote in favor. That's unanimous. We will not be returning to open session. Thank you.